...added by the Charter. So tonight's purpose is to hear what the public has to say regarding the budget, et cetera. And then actually, we'll prepare. So at this point in time, we don't have any signings. I'm just going to go based off of who's in the audience and who would like to speak. Who would like to go first? Matt? Again, please come to the podium if you may. Please state your name and where you're from for a better...
My name is Anne Davies and I'm from Dallas. I've been a lifelong resident of Lousera County. I am also a senior citizen, a retiree, and I live on a month's pension and Social Security. And I'm here because of the budget. I have to manage and organize my finances according to what I have, and I would love to be a resident of County, be able to do the same. And I'm specifically here to talk about the homestead tax, or gift, or whatever. And I've been doing my own little personal daily survey, and I'm finding that people either don't know what it is, don't know if they have it, but the one thing everybody has in common, including me, is not one of us knows what we've done with these savings. Fifty-seven dollars over the years. When I came to my house and you put fifty-seven dollars in my hand, and I put it in my savings account, I'd know that I got a penny for that year. Or I could run to the casino to hit it big, or buy lottery tickets and hit it big also, or go out to dinner, or for coffee. But nobody knew what this fifty-seven dollars did for them. But every one of them that I spoke to, and of course, they're not here, people don't speak up, it's very disappointing, told me to stay on their behalf. "Oh, tell them I agree." Do I agree with you? Take my tax, please. I'm here to give it back to you. And if eighty-six thousand plus people give it back, you need it desperately. This will give you what you need, hopefully, to get us back on an even keel, to take the burden off past administrations who definitely deserve it, and give us a bit of a clean slate. And if in a few years, I'm back here, God forbid, begging the same thing, we'll know who to blame for it. The people of Lousera County voted for the change in government to the Home Rule, elected you guys, all of you, to make the decisions that need to be made, and they're not easy. It's not easy for me. I deny myself a lot, and it annoys me sometimes, and to see other people don't have to do that, I do. And I think it's too late for our kids, but we've passed this down the line to our grandchildren. I don't like hearing people say, "Oh, God, Anne, there you go, talking about common sense." And they laugh. And I was telling Jennifer, "Lousera County has no common sense, for God's sake, what are you talking about?" And that drives me crazy, too. So please, take my fifty-seven dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Next, who would like to come to the podium? Mr. Griffith, raise your hand next.
It's nice to see a new face on the podium. Thanks, Anne, for coming. I appreciate that. And I respectfully disagree with you on that homestead tax, of course, because I think if we take that away from the people who own property in this county, we're penalizing those folks. And I know it's a gift, and I know it's only fifty-seven dollars, but the folks that don't own property as their primary residence are likely to get that back because they're not paying it anyway. So we're actually going to penalize the people who actually own property and live and work and own as their primary residence. Pay taxes here. Guy who has the property outside of the county, has a rental property perhaps, he doesn't have it as his primary residence, he's not paying fifty-seven dollars, which is accurate. But the problem is if we're going to take that away from the people who actually live here, you're penalizing those folks. Continuing on my question is, is this public hearing regarding the budget that was submitted? And I need clarification from either Mr. Pedry or Chairman of the Council as to what is this public hearing for? Is it for the proposed amendments? Is it for the manager's budget? What is this public hearing for?
It's for the 2015 proposed budget made by County Manager Law in October '15. There has been some discussion regarding amendments. If you would like to discuss those matters, would you agree to?
Okay. Because my concern is in the Charter, obviously, and I know a lot of folks on some six members of the council don't really care what the Charter says. But I will tell you, this Charter clearly states you have to have a public hearing on the proposed ordinances that are going to change this Charter. And this public hearing is for the manager's budget. If that's in fact the case, this is the second, much of the same one that we spoke about in September or November when we had the public hearing. The problem that I'm having is that this public hearing here is for the manager's budget, not on the proposed changes, because we don't know what the proposed changes are because they haven't been voted on yet. So how can we have a public hearing on proposed changes that haven't been adopted by council? And the Charter clearly states in Section 2 of the Charter that you have to have a public hearing on those. So are we going to have another public hearing on the proposed ordinances that the council puts forward tomorrow? Because according to Section 211 of the Charter, we're supposed to have a public hearing on that, correct?
No.
Yeah.
211 of the Charter deals with different... With ordinances, not including the budget.
Ordinances.
Yeah.
So it says that there's an ordinance passed to adopt the budget. We have to have a public hearing on that.
Walter, let's just think about this real quick. I mean, you know that the Charter says you have to have one public hearing, not two. We've had two. We changed the process for the simple reason so that we went through a budget process open. We've been going back and forth. In the past, we've had public hearings where we're actually discussing what was going on, not just discussing the ideas. Tonight's purpose is to hear what the public has to say, where they are or where we are right now, okay? From where the manager's ideas, our ideas, amendments. Then we're going to make the final decision, no matter what that case may be. So the point is, is let's find out what the public has to say, we'll make the final decision. If we then go to make the final decisions, and then we call the public back and hear their opinions again, where are we going? Eventually, we're going to...
Just... I just want to clarify what we're doing. In 213 of the Charter, right, Dave? It says in Section B, "In addition to other actions, this Charter act will allow may require county council to take by ordinance. The following action shall require an ordinance and a public hearing at least seven days prior to the final vote, adoption of the annual general fund."
Correct. That's what it said.
So you have... The council has to pass the ordinance, right?
Of course. Walter, this is a public hearing. We're talking about the budget. We're talking about changes to the budget, or no, 2015 budget. Obviously, you can still discuss anything we would like to discuss prior to the vote of the 2015 budget, which is set for tomorrow night. You can discuss it then as well. There's more than enough time for you to have a public...
Another public hearing.
Sure. As much as you would like to talk about these things, the council is available to you.
All right. Well, I would give you a chance to at least research that for tomorrow, so I'm going to bring it up tomorrow and give you an answer on that, because I don't think that's...
Is there something you want to talk about the actual Charter?
Yeah. Section 2 of the Charter, it says there's supposed to be another public hearing.
Is there something about the budget you want to talk about?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. So the changes, and of course, because I come to the meetings, I'm aware of what the changes are and the changes the council wants to make to the budget. And I certainly want to comment on those. But the folks that didn't come to the public meetings don't know what those are because they were never adopted, and that's my point about the Charter issue. So when they become adopted, those folks have to have the opportunity to come in and talk about that. But on the budget items, there's the proposed budget amendments that were discussed at the last meeting. The question is, we're supposed to be cutting money for the budget, yet the very first one says we're going to increase children and youth county match by $175,000. Where is that funding going to come from if the budget's already been submitted with a 4% tax increase? And the other issues is, right below that is number two, is the increase in number of Roman Bridge employees. That was not put in the physician budget, or was put in it. It was not put in the physician budget, and it was not put in the regular budget. So if we add seventeen more people to the budget, how is that cutting the 4% tax increase? And also under Mr. Morelli's amendments, where it says we're going to add the physicians to magistrate district court, where's that funding going to come from for those folks that we pay for their salaries as well? I just don't... I don't understand how that's...
I'll have to address myself, Walter. Again, there's nothing out here that says when you put something in the budget that you have to take it out of elsewhere. I mean, obviously, we want to cut, but the goal here is, at the end of the day, we want to decide again what services we want to have and what services we don't. Again, I'm hearing a lot of people say, "Cut, cut, cut," but no one's coming up and saying which services we want to cut. I'm on record saying, "Listen, we've had magistrate courts come in front of us. They presented a very strong case that if where we cut and how we compare it to other counties, that in my opinion, it made sense not to cut that." So just because that one item was brought to the attention doesn't mean that we can't find money elsewhere. We're still looking at other areas. I'm still in favor of putting the five-dollar registration fee in. I understand the breakdown of it. That's revenue. There's only one way to generate more revenue, and that's somehow going out there and adding a fee or a tax or whatever, some other case. So when I presented my amendments, those were things that were important to me personally. And I was hoping that there was going to be some other ideas from other council members, and at the end of the day, we would come up with a budget. But just because you put something that adds it in, doesn't mean you have to take it from someplace else, Walter.
I certainly understand the position of putting those people back into district magistrates. Anybody who's had to go in there, file a tenant landlord issue, those officers are really running around with their hair on barge constantly. But my concern is, they took them out of the budget. I mean, the manager took them out of the budget. That position's been taken out. The money has been taken out as well, and there's a 4% tax increase. Is there going to be money somewhere else that he can move out of the budget into that position and hire those people back? If that's in fact the case, then it's an actual zero move, because he's taking the money out of the budget to pay them. If that's not possible, and that doesn't get explained in the proposed amendment, I mean, I understand we want to put the people back in. Where's the money going to come from?
The answer to your question, Linda asked this question, I understand a long time ago, if you don't, it comes either from raising taxes or other revenue. So again, it's just... I don't think that... And when you bring in some item, you always have to justify it with something else. It's... I look at the big picture. So the answer is, if you add one thing in, you don't take it from someplace else, you're going back to the tax basis. That's your answer.
Well, and so that's just... I just want to make sure that we're clear. We're looking to cut spending, or save money somewhere for the tax increase to go from 4% to 2 or to 0. I don't think the way to do that is to take and add personnel without any idea of revenue that comes from the payment.
True. But we're also looking to make sure that we provide the best services we can, too.
Absolutely.
That's our responsibility as well.
Absolutely. And I agree that, you know, we shouldn't take services away from the county at the expense of no tax increase either. But when you look at some places in the budget, and I sent this sheet out about the savings in the county where management consulting has actually gone up this year as opposed to what it was last year. You know, we're getting rid of staff all the time to try and trim the budget, and then we're dumping it into management consulting. I don't see how we're benefiting that way. I mean, in our own households, the way we do it is, we can't afford it, we cut somewhere else so we can afford it. We need groceries to go buy gas that week. We make... A lot of senior citizens can't buy medicine. They don't buy medicine. If they have to buy food, they buy food. They sacrifice between food and medicine. They don't just stay long and go to the store and buy the medicine and tell the guy I don't have the money to pay for it. So I think there's a lot of places in this budget where there could be cuts made to the tune of $883,000, that sheet that I sent to the council. Hopefully, that that will help shed some light on those ways that we could save some money, actually save some money. I mean, I certainly understand if you can't cut services to the point where people don't get service, that's not my idea. But when we have other places where there's money being spent foolishly or frivolously on nonessential items, travel expenses. So far, we spent $55,000. The budget says $55,000. Yes, this year's the date, we only spent $20,000. So why do we need to increase the budget? I don't understand. $30,000 to increase the budget in travel expenses? We only spent $20,000 so far this year, but we're going to budget $55,000. Management consulting, we only spent $300,000 this year so far to date, and we're budgeting $987,000. I don't understand why we have to ask such a big increase. Some of them are obviously moved around from account to account. Meeting in conference fees, $64,000 spent to date, $120,000 budgeted. I mean, you can cut those numbers in half and still provide services. I mean, some people may not go to a conference, or some people may not get travel reimbursement if they can't go someplace. That's not the end of the...
Do you want to address that?
Go ahead.
Well, because I was trying to express we had eighteen sheets of the expenditure category detail, 2015 proposed, but it was eighteen sheets. And there's blurbs or rationale with the line items. And I was trying to make the point at the last meeting, that granted, you don't want to take away things that are mandated by the state or federal government, or obligations that are contractual. But I really, I have problems with laying off staff and the tight circumstances we're in. Why not forego at least four years some of these conferences, some of the travel expenses, eliminate them, not cover professional fees that were not legally obligated to do? And I cited on page 13 of that document, Division 70 Human Services, $2,900, and the explanation was, and that's to cover membership dues. The Human Service Administrator is a member and past president of the Pennsylvania Association of County Human Services Administrators. Great, bravo. But why are we... That's wonderful. Why can't he cover his own professional dues? Is that contractual? Those are the things I would like to see eliminated.
Can I bring up two points? One, Mr. Obash, we had at our last meeting, and I think we've sent probably, I forget how many texts, emails, we've thrown, asking for specific amendments, very, very specific line items amendments. He did not do that. So he did not say those...
Mr. Morelli, I know you made a point.
Okay. I'm just... It's now to say, it's nice to say that, but when the officer was there...
And I say to you, these documents, minuscule print, and the expert in this room, running the county, should have done a better job preparing the budget and meeting deadlines.
Okay. But the point is...
As per the Lousera County Home Rule Charter, Mr. Morelli, I'm not going to be dictated by one other council member.
I'm just making the point, you had the opportunity to bring those specifics up, and you did not. Walter, I want to bring it back to you, I want to ask you a specific question. You brought this to us tonight, and you said, obviously, you came back, you sent an email with some changes, about $833,000. Let's use the magistrates for example, that's $700,000, even less, I think there are some other people. Even if you add the magistrates and we cut those specifics, we're still looking at about a $4 million-plus hole. If you were sitting here, you had the decision, would you take back the homestead? Would you raise taxes? Or would you cut people? Because those are only... Or even would you go with the monetization? What would you do? Because we're talking some small items, but none of these items are balancing the budget, and those are the tough decisions. So what would you do? Which one of those items?
Well, quite honestly, I wouldn't take the homestead away for $4 million. I would not do that. I would go back, first of all, I would go get the manager's budget back and tell him to fix it, put the information in that he needs to put in, and put it in correctly, because I just found, like I said, when I went through the budget quickly, these are only like seven items that are considered nonessential items that I think could be cut, without affecting services in the county, without affecting anybody in the county other than the employee who gets to go to a conference, other than the ability for the manager to hire some consultant to come in here and do the job that we're paying somebody $90,000 to do. A lot of these things, we had a consultant come into the prison. Did we utilize anything that that man brought in here? All of these consultants that come in here, have we used anything? A lot of these fees are something that... They're nice to have. I agree, they're nice to have if we have the money.
And I understand your point, but again, my specific question to you was, those four items, they're big item ideas that are going to balance this budget, tough decisions. I understand that you're going to sit here and argue all night long about this item versus that item. I agree with you on some, some... You might be right, there's a lot of ways we could save money, but the question is, do we want to do that? Is that the best way of running our counties? But the fact is, right now, we have about a week to figure out how to balance this budget. Do we totally go with the homestead? Do we raise taxes? Do we have major layoffs? I mean, it's not that complicated.
I understand, here's the level.
It's just a tough decision.
I understand, here's the level. I'm not trying to say you guys don't have a tough job at all. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that the manager is not giving you an accurate picture of spending and revenues. The revenues are bloated, and the expenditures are over. I mean, there's clearly revenues in there that are put in the thing that we haven't even come close to hitting half of the revenues, but they're in the budget as increased. Why? That's not good budgeting. If your budget says that you only brought in $100,000 a share revenue, why would you increase that budget revenue out of the $300,000? It makes no sense. If you have management consulting and you spent $300,000 to date, why would you increase that to almost $1 million? I don't understand that. Now, the argument can be made that the numbers aren't accurate because all the numbers aren't in, and there's still stuff out there that has to be paid. I understand some of that is true, but there's a lot of stuff in this budget that isn't accurate, to the point where he never even gave you the right procedure to submit the budget in the first place. It shouldn't have been accepted. I mean, my goodness, you don't even have prior figures to go by. The public doesn't have prior figures to go by. I mean, it's grossly unfair to the council, as well as the taxpayers of this county, to get a budget that doesn't even have a prior number in it compared to them. But again, the issue is not an easy solution, you know? The manager has to make tough decisions, no question about it. I mean, rolling layoffs, Mr. Obash talked about rolling layoffs, it's a good answer. You can tell people to stay home for a whole month, and you can save the county $4 million. It's something... Commissioners tried to do it years ago, and they didn't have to do it, but in 2010, the commissioners wanted to do that, and sell people you had to stay home. You had to pick the department, and said you had to pick the employee to stay home a month, and saves the county the money. There's options out there that we can do to save some money, whether you'll hit $4 million, I don't know. But clearly, there's a lot more than $200,000 the council worked at. And if we were doing the ordinances and doing the charter reporting for the budget according to the Charter, we'd have these proposed ordinances adopted by now. And now it would be just a matter of accepting the ordinances. But that didn't happen, because as every other year goes by, we wait till the last minute, and then it's 11th hour, and everybody sprays them to try and find cuts. I understand it's not an easy task. The homestead going away is not the answer. I don't think taking $57,000 off to somebody who's not going to get a tax, and raise their taxes too, because I'm sure that's probably in the picture as well. You're going to take the homestead away and not raise their taxes? Maybe that might be an option for somebody to consider. But I'll guarantee you, even if you take that away, the manager will overspend the budget again next year. He's overspent it every year he's been here. Every single year, he's overspent this budget. This year's by $7 million. That was the council in July that told council he's overspending the budget, and nobody listened. And now we're in November, and we got the audit report that says he's overspent by almost $7 to $10 million. $1 million from 911, which we borrowed, went out with the controller and complained about. That's where that $1 million left, and nobody knows where that is. So there's a lot of places it can be cut, without cutting services and without cutting employees. I'm not a big fan of firing employees. And we didn't fire any employees according to the HR report, because we actually have a net. If you look at the report that's on the HR page, we didn't lose anybody. Look at the HR report, it says that we got rid of 100 and some people, and we kept 100 and some people. We just hired them in different positions. We laid a guy off from Budget and Finance, where did we put him? Roman Bridge. That's not a termination. He didn't move to save any money there. So, you know, there's a lot of places to be cut this budget without worrying about, well, this is catastrophic, $4 million. And there's some of them that I just don't like tonight.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Griffith, do you have a copy of your suggestions?
Sure. I'll leave them to you.
I'll check my email.
Absolutely. I'll leave them to you.
Great. Yes.
I've attended most of these county meetings, and, you know, there's things that council's done, managers done, you know, on the states. But in the courses here, out of everything, missed deadlines, escaped convicts, vicaring, all that stuff, instead of dealing with all of those, instead of dealing with the issues at hand, like with the debt and with the overcrowded jail, we spent since February this year till October, the beginning of November, we dealt with backyard chickens. Okay? So if that tells you of the priority that, you know, was placed on the debt and the deficit and the overcrowded jail, instead of dealing with all those issues, we dealt with the backyard chickens. So now we're looking at, as the chairman said about the eliminating the homestead, you know, that we're going to end up, you know, we have a week to deal with this, and some people say eliminating the homestead. He mentioned three other options. Personally, if I was the manager, I'd go for the monetization. And I'll tell you why. Because the monetization, even though it's a one-shot deal, it's not a recurring, you know, revenue. At least it would spare the taxpayers, okay, for at least one year. All right? Now, as far as the magistrate goes, magistrate's office goes, during the committee meetings over the summer, it was mentioned that the state wasn't meeting their obligations to the county. So why wasn't anybody going to the state, their state reps, you know, either state reps or state senator, to, you know, talk to them about, you know, putting money back into fully funding the magistrate's offices? And I talked with the state, and they said that because they have budget deficits as well, and now we find out that they're $2 billion short as of this right now. So my suggestion to this county would be, why don't you guys do like a services swap? In terms of, since they, you know, they are transporting, you know, or they house our inmates, you know, like we transport our inmates to the state prison because there's no room in the jail, why can't we, and they owe us, you know, as far as they can't match the funding, why can't they house our inmates, thereby sparing us the overtime costs and transfer, you know, in that savings, that $500,000 in savings, we would be able to fully, like at least fund, make up some of the gap for the magistrate's office? That's something to consider, because it's like, even though it might not make up the full amount, at least it's making up something. You know what I'm saying? You're paying one bill instead of two, is what I'm trying to say. Now, also during the committee meetings, when the corrections meeting was held, even though Councilman Urban's not here, he mentioned that the county spent to the tune of $1.5 million housing criminal illegals. Why didn't the county speak with Congressman Marletta about procuring monies from the federal government in terms of the reimbursement for that cost to the county? I think $1.5 million would make a difference. So that's another thing we might be able to explore looking at, that would be able to, you know, finance either the jail costs. And also, there's another suggestion as far as, instead of hiring, you know, Mr. Pedry brought up hiring 10 full-time corrections officers at the prison, why not explore the option, instead of hiring correction officers that would be only used, utilized, well, they would be only utilized for transporting, but they would be in part utilized for transporting convicts and inmates to the state prison? Why not consider using state constables? That would be an option, because that way, they're trained, they're recognized by the state, and also, it wouldn't cost the county in terms of paying overtime, or not overtime, pensions and healthcare and time off down the road. So that's something to consider. Um, let's see here. So as far as the monetization goes, I understand some of the council members and maybe others think that, well, we need to use those tax claims for, you know, three years from now when we want to get a credit rating. Well, why worry about something three years from now if we're having a crisis or impending crises happening right in front of us? It makes no sense to deal with something that may happen three years from now when we're dealing with a problem now. So, I just want to close by saying, if we don't, if we don't find solutions now to, you know, deal with the debt and the deficit and the overcrowding of the jail, this county government is going to cease to exist because an entity that fails to be effective usually ceases to exist. Thank you.
Well, should we?
Is one allowed to speak twice?
I'll allow most everyone else speaks.
Okay.
Who else? Shiner.
In 2012, first year of the Home Rule government, after many years of tax increases, year after year, of having to raise the taxes once again, at that point, awaiting the arrival of a new manager, council approved a 2% tax hike. I was one of the proponents of that 2% tax hike. And my reasoning for it, which I think most of the people that are still part of this council agreed to, was that so the manager had some wiggle room when he arrived on the scene. So that he could take his time, go through the existing budget and with a scalpel, not a hatchet, trim the budget, get rid of the waste that we knew was built into the budget and had been for years. But it gave the new manager the time to do this. So, we got the 2% increase put through and the thanks we got was overspending the budget by 7.4 million dollars. The following year, there was no tax increase. And the thanks we got was overspending the budget by another 7, 8 million dollars, we're not sure yet. Last year, we had this 8% tax increase and the thanks we're getting for that is another overspending and we have no idea what that's going to be, but we already know that the TAM for next year is going to be used to pay this year's bills again this year. And now you're considering a budget that will have a tax increase or in any other way, put another burden on the taxpayers of this county? Are you all out of your minds? How could you even consider such a thing? I don't care about the swap amounts or anything else. We have a manager that does not live within the budget you hand him. When are you going to open your eyes to do something about that issue? You want to keep raising the taxes on us? You want all of us to keep doing more with less? That's the job of the professional manager that you hired to run this county. And yes, we realize we have to do it to some extent to help, but we've been doing it for many years. It's not our turn anymore. It's your turn. And it's your turn to make sure that the person you hired to run this county does it. You've been handed garbage, also known as the budgets for again this year. The position budget, there's all kinds of flaws in it. If you care to look at it and find them. I don't have all the data with me tonight because I had a long day today taking my father for doctor's appointments and I barely made it here. But that's one of the issues you need to look at. There's a tremendous amount of padding in the general budget itself, as Mr. Griffiths was bringing up. We constantly hear, okay, well, we'll just have to fire some more people. Well, the actual statistics Mr. Griffiths was talking about is termination since 2012. The Human Resources Activity Report says that we've terminated, through retirement, deaths, resignations, layoffs and terminations, 386 people through 2014 year-to-date. Of course, we don't know when this is put out because we don't date anything in this county. But we've rehired 262 people, which means we've only really let go 124 people and that includes retirements, deaths, resignations. And firing people for not doing their jobs while they're on vacation, I guess. So, we really haven't terminated that many people. And the problem is, those 262 people that rehired, we hired them at rather high salaries. That's where all the money's going. Take a look. People you hired at 85,000 are in the position budget at 90,000. There's a $5,000 raise right there that nobody even knew they got. There's guard positions at 29,000 in the correctional facility. They don't even exist, but they're in the position budget. Management consulting. We were told that the reason the management, the division heads were going to be given the high rates was to eliminate the management consulting. Yet the people that are in these positions have to hire out management consulting to do everything. We had to hire out to do job descriptions. I can find that on the internet. You can buy it from a company, you can get it from another government, you can simply ask the people doing the jobs, which we did that anyway, but we still hired out, we spent quite a bit of money, but all we got was for the management people, we still have to do the right amount. 2012, asked the manager, give him the time to come in and cut with a scalpel, but all he does is use a hatchet. That's all he does. Anybody can do that. And then he throws it at you guys and says, you figure it out and give it back to me. You're a part-time legislative body. It's not your job to go through this budget line item by line item. It's not your job to see that 300,000 has been used, but he's asking almost a million for the coming year. It's his job to make this budget as lean as possible. Your job is to accept it or reject it. And in this case, and considering the timing, in my humble opinion, the only choice you have is to reject this budget. Let it bounce back to the 2014 budget. Let the manager deal with the figures. Let him come to you as needed and request that the money be moved from division to division because according to the charter, unless you want to ignore this part also, he can't do that without your approval. But a tax increase? Why? It doesn't matter if you give him another 4 million or another 10 million, he's still probably going to overspend it again next year. You've got to put a stop to what's going on in this county. The people in this county thought they did this by voting in Home Rule. It's your job now to show us we were right and do so. You've got to put a stop to what you created and what is allowing it to happen. This is the last time you can do this. It's been three budgets. It's got to stop. And you are the ones that have to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shiner, I just want to say that I respectfully disagree with what you say that it's our job to either give this budget back to the manager or not. When we put this in the charter, it's, from my opinion, it's council's responsibility now to look at this. So, when you say we should not be going through it line by line, which is what you've done and what others have, I do think that is something we should do. And it's our final decision as to where we want to go with this budget. When it comes down to services, where it comes down to where to spend the money. So, I think that there is a little bit more of a, more responsibility on the legislative branch here than maybe we can correct. I mean, do you think that that's why we run other than just saying, hey, Bob, go do this or, Bob, you're not doing it right? I think that our job, we should be taking some responsibility other than just going out and pointing fingers at other people. So, I do, my point is, respect me, I listen to you, my point was that this is our responsibility now and I think it's not only our responsibility, but the future, responsibility of future councils. That's our job. We don't have a lot of power under the charter, unlike school boards and things like that. But when it comes to the budget, we do. So, I just want to say that.
Mr. Chairman.
And just to, I agree with you to a point also, but I don't think you should have to spend this much time going through line item by line item, department by department. I think that's asking too much of this council.
But I'm going to also remind you, a year ago, I said, the 2015 budget starts now. I said that.
I know that and I agree with you.
And I was the one who led the charge with the committees. You know, the goal of those committees was so that council could get a better understanding of what's going on in each of those divisions. So, we know how they're doing, where they're going. I didn't chair any of those committees. I distributed the power of one person to many people to say, hey, go run with them, be the leaders, understand that so that when it comes to crunch time here, we get that. You know as well as I do, you went to those meetings, a lot of those meetings were not focused on the divisions or what was going on. So, yes, there is blame, the fact that it's a learning process. But that was a process, again, and I've said this, our responsibility is this, sometimes we get caught up in the day-to-day operations, which we shouldn't, and you know we shouldn't, that's one of the things of taking politics out. But that was our goal. And you know what? Shame on some people, shame on all, but that was the point of this. And so, again, going back to your, to my debate with you was the fact that this is our responsibility and the council should be doing a more, a better job each month in understanding the divisions. And that was the goal of the committees, so that each of us take ownership of those divisions, become experts and come back with specific recommendations as of now. You're right, that did happen.
So, can I?
Mr. Chair, what?
Mr. Obash and Mr. Chris.
Number one, I want to calmly say that I feel, as strong as you feel about each and every one of us going line by line, I feel just as strong about the majority of this council's failure for the proper oversight over the citizen tax dollars, overspending by our manager and not holding him accountable each time the audits were late, each time submissions. This last time, SLOP was turned in, Mr. Shiner used the word garbage, I'll use the manager's own word that he said, I don't know, months ago, he used the word SLOP, he did turn in SLOP. And we failed in that oversight to make him accountable and follow the charter. And what we have created is an executive branch that's gone amok. They disrespect this council by ignoring those deadlines. They know the majority is not going to follow through with any strong action to implement the Lutheran County Home Rule Charter and their deadlines for the audits and the budget submission and in the way they were supposed to be submitted. They know it. That's why it's ignored. That's why we have comedy routines at council meetings trying to get the audience to laugh. That's why we have disrespect to council members. And the second thing, as far as the committees, how can a committee chair get the information they need with the threat, and there is a pending ethics complaint on me, for asking a division head to come to a committee meeting or head of human services slash legislative or a situation that was an emergency issue and asking answers of division heads? We're almost threatened and intimidated to even see out the information. Yet some council members can send emails and ask numerous questions and nothing's said. So, as far as the committee's failing, I think the chair interfered with the chairs with the agenda and I disagree wholeheartedly with you on that. And I'm more inclined to agree with Mr. Shiner about the line by line. Thank you.
And I'll just sponsor your accusation. I did not ever interfere with them. You cannot tell the executive branch what to do. You could ask questions, there's a difference.
I see your information.
Very clear, I'm not going to get into it, it's right now in their hands. That was it. Mr. Hoss?
Yeah, Mr. Trapp, appreciate what you said before about the individual committee responsibilities. I think we're moving in the right direction in many aspects. Being a member of the real estate committee, I think our committee was marginally successful about divesting from the county tax rolls, actually putting on, back on the county tax rolls surplus property dispatch, which, Mr. Pedry as well, that I proposed that we use about $150,000, $200,000 of that revenue realized by putting those properties back on the rolls for this budget. Because I'm not willing to, if you look at this budget, there's a lot of things that we're just going to have every year going forward for some time. You know, we have debt servicing increases over a million dollars again this year. We have retirement costs, they're escalating. Healthcare stayed low this year, but that's going to be another hit next year. These are things that are naturally the outpouring of decades and decades of bad governing and debt. We are enslaved to this debt. So, Mr. Manager, again, I give you a credit here because I think you've generally done a commendable job, when I haven't always agreed with you. You've pulled us away from the precipice. This year, I personally just don't think the taxpayers can really stomach another tax increase. We look at all levels of government, that people are just exhausted and weary from this. So, my big thing is I'm going to restate tomorrow in the form of amendment, I want to see any non-recurring revenue that we realized in this past calendar year and put it to offset the tax increase and/or layoffs for this year. And I'll put that in, I'll codify that tomorrow September evening, just to make sure. But I would encourage my council members to really take a second look at that and move that forward because this is a dire situation. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Toss. Wilson. Mr. Ross.
I don't, a few billions, billions of dollars of budgets processes in my lifetime, and it's just that I'm too old. Here we are, supposedly, dancing with that term of transparency while at the same time hiding the faucet, who gets supposedly a seven-day window according to the charter for citizens to have input. But it reminds me about that old movie, that little girl with red shoes and the guy behind the curtain. Where's the budget? He goes to hang around slips of paper, hiding behind desks somewhere. Here we are, why we can clarify that this meeting time is to review the submitted budget of October 15th? What the heck were we doing for the last two months? I would expect that all the corrections should have been and all your ideas would have been baked in so the citizens would have seven days to look at something that's somewhere near final. Instead, what you're doing here, folks, is what we call in business, the gun-to-head Approve this, we're going to tell you, we'll give you a couple of problems and that's that. And we're going to sit behind closed doors and figure out what we're going to do. What I think really disturbed me tonight is there's some increases in which you only, yes, there are corrections that need to be done. But you remember the teeter-totter analogy that I gave you a month ago? Well, when you put more stuff on one end of the teeter-totter, if you want to have a balanced budget, you got to push down on the other end. That other end is revenue or tax increase. And I haven't heard anybody talk about, does the 4% go up and by how much to fund these corrections? You just can't talk about fixing this by increasing spending and not figuring out how are you going to offset it to maintain that 4% or whatever it is. Okay? You've got to stop the showbiz. Okay? There's too many people out there to figure this out. As we told you last, way even once ago, the timetable for this budget cycle was broken. Guess what? I guess we found out, like, next time, maybe next year, you'll listen. I just don't know that you're going to get a grieve upon solution because it sounded like you folks want to have an all or nothing solution using one, one solution set. The answer's going to be a combination of stuff. And I'm still waiting for somebody to come up and talk about the tax base. Here we are at the last minute and I haven't heard a peep about the revenue side of things. And, you know, just raising lower taxes, but what about the grand list as we call it? And how kosher is that? Given all the buildings and the commercial development that went on last year, and the grand list didn't go up? Folks, there's opportunity there and it should be in the budget. And $5 tax, as I recall, that's not applicable to the 100 fund. We mentioned that last week, we mentioned it the week before. I don't want to preach accounting, but, you know, that's a restricted fund. You folks have the accounting degrees, I don't know. Thank you.
Who else would like to say something regarding the budget? I got you. Forget about you. Anybody? Anybody? Anyone? Anyone who'd like to come back?
Well, we got a place for somebody here. I made a mistake, I shouldn't have sent you, so I could do what happened. Do you have these mics? They don't work. Same as the county, they don't work there either. And everybody talks a organ to do, I think Brian made the best suggestion of everything here, turn this down and do it correctly. You can give him how much money he wants, he overspends every year, and we need more money. And we've talked, a few are talking about different things here. We budgeted how much we're going to take in revenue and taxes. We never take that much money in. Why did we put it in? We put in how much we're going to get, you get half, ninety percent? Why did we put in a hundred percent? We never get it, we overspend. And the audit, why is that held up? Because I think, because we know it's a big whack coming on this audit, when we finally get the audit. Somebody needs to have kicked in an audit, they threw the flood party under the bus, oh, you didn't give us some information. I was at the meeting when they said, back in February, they asked for what we need. We never got it, and then they were blamed because they didn't get it. And back in budget finance, wonder if it's backing, and people remember that were here, come to regular meetings, and they said they put this on the auditors, why it wasn't done? And the audit by, by July eighth, I'll have those figures. Mid-July, I said, where are the figures? Now it's December, we still don't have the figures. Vote this down, go back to 2014, and then let him work to make it work on 2014. He overspends every year, no matter, and taking away the homestead exemption, lady of Texas, and why I totally disagree with that, I was the person that challenged that when he tried to do it before. Back then, it was a four-point-two-vision windfall, it's one of these little under, under-table doing it, but now we're bringing it out in the open. Hey, that's another thing. If you raise it four percent, you're taking the four percent off the taxpayers that own their own home, that's an eight percent for them. It's not just fifty-seven dollars, and then you compound it every year. We got to get the manager to do his job. You can't spend more than we take in. And then at the end, I hope we have another meeting where you people get together and do it with Walter Point, that we should have a public hearing after you do the budget. All these suggestions come up, and nothing happens. Usually, when I get them speaking, I say, thank you next, because that's all it is. It's thank you next. Everybody gives suggestions, but nobody pays attention. Thank you next.
Thank you next. And, like, my question is-
I would, I think. I don't feel quite as nervous now, but I don't have Walter's intimate knowledge, and I certainly don't have Mr. Shiner's either. And if opinions were a dime a dozen, I could solve your debt problems too, because I'm full of opinions. But I hear whining, I hear backbiting, I hear blaming on the manager. This is going to sound silly, but this is not my first rodeo. I'm a retiree from Loseran County, corner of the corner, please. I've listened to this garbage for years. I've never seen a budget balanced on time, but they used to, I did payroll or paid bills, they used to stop paying bills in September to balance the budget and pay everything in January. Nobody wanted to listen, nobody wanted to hear it. Yes, you might have stopped the homestead thing, and, and I think Mary Ann Petrola, whatever was the voice. Mary Ann Petrola was wrong to do it the way she did it, but it was, it's the right thing to do, to give you the chunk of money you need, because otherwise, I don't know enough about monetization. But I just don't like it. And the libraries, I love my library, I'm back on the Royal Library, love my libraries. If you have not been in one in a long time, go in, take a look. Look at the computers that are being used constantly by people looking for work, by students, people that don't have computers at home. And I, and I love my library. I look at this five-dollar nickel-and-diming, it's not going to solve anything, it's just going to annoy people. And laying off employees, I watched them laid off, I took the first buyout, it was fabulous. And they replaced every single one of us, and I worked for the courts. And we knew they would. And I watched people get raises, and I knew they would. So this is not new. You're all saying the same old stuff. And I like to think I'm older than I look. I've been around, heard it all. It's a thankless task, but boy, oh, boy, let's blame the manager for everything, because he had the guts to actually want to come into Loseran County. Yes, you're, I've never met the man, never laid eyes on him before tonight. Yeah, you're getting paid, and it's a thankless task. I think it's almost a thankless task for all of you. It's not going to be solved overnight. It took more than, well, my thirty years to get to this point. But I'm going to go back to the homestead. Oh, I have a lot of mantras, and I know I shouldn't say this, but in life, we all have to put on our big boy and good girl pants, and it's time you guys do it. You got to do it. And I hear you cut, cut, somebody from services here and services there, and you cut the employees, and you cut a lot of worker bees, and I used to see the workers when I'm there. And that's, that's a personal axe I have to grind. But when I get back to the libraries, when I think about the people that are using the computers and doing any kind of county business on the computer, and I'm not nearly as knowledgeable, I have tried to avoid this for the last, we don't know, years. When the libraries have to close because your nickel-and-diming cut out, or the five-dollar, whatever, you've cut the employees, you've cut the services, I, it's, I think it's a shame, our children have all left the valley, we're, we're kicking this to our grandchildren. I don't want people to laugh and snicker that I work for Loseran County, that I live in Loseran County. If you haven't seen Kids for Cash, and it doesn't piss you off and make you cry, there's something wrong. You, I don't have specifics. I'm really, I'm really personally hung up on the four million-plus dollars you can get for fifty-seven dollars. It won't stop any of us from buying a house. I disagree with Walter completely, because he knows that we've been doing that for years. It's, it's just, look at the few people that have come out, not everybody knows this stuff. I'm not a, a prepared budgets with the county. I have to live within my own means. It's difficult, it's not easy, and things come up, but nickel-and-diming ain't going to do it. And I think, I think that's it.
You're good. Thank you, Man. Thank you, and thank you, Mark.
Uh, Mr. Charlie brought up about the audit, uh, I brought up, uh, two weeks ago about the redevelopment authority. Uh, that needs to be included in the audits, because under section five of the ordinance that forms the redevelopment authority, it says that redevelopment authority must be included in the audit. For the past couple of years, the redevelopment authority has had its own independent auditor, and I sent all of you on council the ordinance for the, that was formed by, the redevelopment authority was formed by the commissioners, and under that section five, it says, it states that the county comptroller, uh, performs the audit for the redevelopment authority, which it hasn't done. So, that's another thing. And also, another thing is that, on the revenue side, that I believe that vacant properties that are within the county should be brought back to the tax rolls, and that the council has an obligation to formulate a plan that would be able to taper. Uh, vacancies, the vacant properties that have been all scattered all over the county that's increasing because of the unaffordability of paying taxes of property owners, that maybe we might want to see about getting to a plan that would bring those properties back onto the tax rolls, so it would increase the revenue that's being brought into the county. As Mr. Ross states, that you need to put, you know, something back on the teeter-totter, which is the revenue side, and this would, you know, at least get us on the path to finding out, like, which projects would be better suited to get those properties put back on the rolls, so.
Mark, thank you, I appreciate it. Just sent an email.
I have a question for Mr. Page, because he mentioned the comptroller, she did the audit for the housing. Did you get an answer from our comptroller to find out?
No. She, she said that she would look into it, and she never got that.
Good job, Mr. Mark.
Okay.
A lot here about, and there's a very good possibility that this budget may be handed back to the manager with the 2014 numbers, and I think it's better to understand what his plan would be and what he would do before rather than after. So I've asked Mr. Ross to let everyone know, if he has handed back the 2014 budget numbers, what he would do, how he would handle it, and I want all of council to understand the consequences, and as well, what will take place. So, Mr. Ross, I'm going to hand it over to you, please.
Okay, well, you know, first, I appreciate and understand a lot of critical remarks that we made here tonight, and some of them are well-founded. But I'd like to remind folks that we have reduced the workforce since Home Rule came on, came into being. In this year's budget, we've been able to control healthcare costs for the first time because we negotiated cooperatively with, with our collective bargaining units, and we reduced healthcare costs by three million dollars in total in, for 2014, two million of which represent a general fund reduction, with some, with some changes in the, with some changes in the employee participation of, of paying for services, and it's critical. We don't use, um, bond proceeds to pay debt service, as happened in the first budget in 2012, and we don't monetize anymore. And I can't begin to explain how important it is that we don't monetize. When you don't monetize, you receive your current year tax revenue plus a certain amount of tax revenue from prior years. And what that means for this county in 2014 and 2015, because we didn't monetize and we, we held off in 2013, we collect ninety-two percent of our current year tax levy. We collect another eight million dollars in prior-year taxes, which means we end up getting one hundred percent of our tax levy for each year. Ninety-two percent of new money, eight percent of old money. And, and if you don't monetize, that continues to ride along, as people, if people have back taxes that get to year three, they don't want to go to tax sale, they pay up. You have to wait three years for that to happen. When you monetize, you sell off for cash today what you would receive in future years. That's the Reader's Digest version. If we monetize today, we could get four million dollars. That means I would get four million dollars less next year if I don't monetize. If I do monetize, I'll get probably three million dollars from the prior year, and as you go forward year after year, the amount you receive through monetization, the sale of prior-year taxes, gets smaller and smaller and smaller. Why? Because you sold them all already, and you can't sell them more than once. And then you end up hitting bottom with ninety-two percent of your property tax revenue and nothing from the back taxes to fill the gap. So, not monetizing is important for county cash flow, and it's important for predictability of revenues. Plus, when you monetize, you'll lose anywhere from five to ten percent of the amount you monetized, [bleep], the, um, to the money guys who want to come in and solve all your problems with monetization. So, I think it's important to note that we, we haven't resorted to that. So let's talk about some of the big changes. I told you, our budget in 2015 includes a reduction of two million in, in health insurance costs in the general fund. Our debt service in the, in the credit to [bleep] go up by a million dollars, that's what we're projecting. We have court-ordered tax refunds dating back to 2009 that were not resolved, that we have to pay back. That's about 1.25 million. Can't get off from under that, can't get off from under the debt service. We have 1.9 million in match [bleep] funds to pay for the domestic relations office, which ensures that child support payments are made. That's a required match, negotiated, collective bargaining raises. I remind folks that the non-represented employees, you know, they, they get called management, but they include secretaries, they include clerks, they include people who are not, simply not in the union, and they're not all high rollers. Those employees haven't received a raise in seven years. They are paying more now for their health insurance than they were before. And the county council, the county council increased the number of hours worked per week by non-represented employees by fifteen percent. So their salaries nominally have stayed the same, and their hours have gone up, pretty good deal. So if council decides to not adopt a budget, now, they've got it, they've got a budget in front of them, they've, they've had the finding aid, they can do whatever they like, add, subtract, more expense, more, you know, less revenue, whatever they wish, whatever they wish to do, because the budget's in their hands. If they choose, however, not to adopt a budget, that means it'll revert to the 2014 budget. That budget, without further action by council, will immediately put us, well, will put us in a position of, of having to default on debt service. We've got more money for debt service budgeted in 15 than we do in 14. As has been noted on numerous occasions in this and other venues, the county manager cannot unilaterally transfer money or expenditure authority across divisions. Debt service sits in its own division. The manager has to come back to the council and say, I'm proposing this reduction in order to increase this expenditure. And council will have to vote each time that happens. And if they don't like it, the council's going to have to, going to have, it'll be incumbent upon council to say, no, 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 don't do this, we would prefer to take the money from there. It is a zero-sum game. You've got a million dollars that will have to be gone in debt service, and frankly, if the council votes not to adopt the budget, I can't predict that that increase will be limited to a million dollars. It's a variable rate, and we may see some other reactions. And that, we also may have a bigger issue with the, with the TAM, and the interest rate of the TAM. That's, that's an impact of what, of what could happen. There are some alternatives that have been discussed to dealing with the budget. I've already discussed monetization, I don't recommend it. It puts us back where we were. You know, in 2014, we had an eight percent tax increase. Only 1.5, 1.6 percent of that tax increase was for expenditures. The other was to plug the revenue holes that had been generated in previous years by the use of non-recurring revenue to pay recurring expenses. If we go into monetization, we will take a step backward to those days. The, the five-dollar, in some places it's called a wheel tax, the five-dollar registration fee, if there's revenue from that, that would be, if that, if that were done, and I didn't put it in the list of recommendations, that would be applied to the road and bridge division, which currently gets 1.5 million dollars in general fund support. So, I believe that those funds from the registration tax can be used for, for maintenance or repair of public ways. That's where we would do it, the money being fungible could be applied someplace else. Another thing that's had some discussion here, and I want you all to think about it, is the notion of removing the homestead exemption. It's not recommended by the manager. Not then, not now. If the council decided to do it, this would be the manager's recommendation for the council. Number one, sunset, lifted for three years, five years, but a specific sunset. Number two, none of those funds go into the operating budget. All of those funds, realized, would go into the general fund reserve. You know, we've said before, we need, in order to avoid a trend, in order to have money on hand for cash flow, not for appropriation, but for cash flow, you need about 15 million dollars. And so if you were to say, you know, we're going to lift the homestead exemption temporarily and put this money over into the reserve where it's not usable for appropriation, but you can do that inter-fund borrowing during the year, pay it back at the end of the year to meet the cash flow, then we don't have to go to Wall Street for a trend. That's longer down the road. It's a 15-million-dollar, at least, race to run, plus where we are in the red right now in the general fund, the accrued, the accrued, you know, the- now in the general fund, the accrued, the accrued, uh, you know, accrued debt in the general fund. We could spend the next twenty years chipping away at that, a million bucks a year and every million, every time we do it, the council would have to vote again and again, year after year for twenty years, to tax a little bit more than they're willing to spend and whatever change we find, theoretically, whatever metaphorical change we find in our pockets at the end of the fiscal year, well, that would get thrown in there too. That's the most important thing we can do for ourselves and for the next generation is to have that cash on hand. Wall Street will look at us differently, but you can't get there without making some big strides. Part of it would also be, uh, and with all due respect to the members of council, any non-recurring revenue, property sale, lawsuit, any of that that goes into the reserve, it doesn't get applied to operating costs. So if you're interested in, in taking off the homestead, I would say sunset it, apply it for a specific purpose and not encourage us to rely on it for future operating expenses. But to come back to the, the main point here, council, if council decides not to adopt a budget and revert to the 2014 budget, it won't be a matter of sticking it to the manager because the manager is gonna have to come back to the council time and again in order to accomplish those budget transfers and the difficult choices that one thinks are avoided will in fact come back and come back hard. So I appreciate the opportunity to put this in, in context. I respect everything that's been said beforehand. This is a, this is a difficult challenge. I also wanna add, and if you look at the, the, um, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, their magazine every year publishes county taxes and spending. For third class counties, Luzern falls squarely in the middle on general fund expenditures, squarely on the middle, per capita expenditures in the general fund, squarely in the middle on, on the, uh, on the property, on the, on the, on the mileage rates. We are squarely in the middle on population. We're not an outlier, uh, by any means compared to other jurisdictions that confront similar challenges. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the people who participated tonight.
I appreciate the bottom and thank you again. I thought that was, uh, that's important information for all of us to understand and to digest for the next week until we make a decision. And I think the key point there is that, um, we could pass a buck on the bottom, that end of the day is gonna come right back to us and we're gonna make a final decision. That's something that we're gonna have to take responsibility for. A couple reminders, uh, we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at the county courthouse. It's a budget meeting, um, and, and very possibly we could vote on this budget, some of that's for extension for the fifteenth, the fifteenth is the last day. I said, let's have our meeting tomorrow, we will discuss options, we'll vote, if not, we'll vote on the fifteenth. But with that said, we're supposed to be getting some bad weather. We'll make the decision tomorrow. Obviously we want safety to be the first priority, so we'll see what goes on and if we need to put a meeting in the middle, we'll certainly do whatever we have to. So we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow and then we have a meeting on the fifteenth scheduled, that's, that's a variable. And on the sixteenth, we have a floor session. So that's what we have going on right now.
Just to clarify if I could?
Sure.
So for prospective amendments, what is the exact process?
Well, again, so.
My intention is to give some of the [INAUDIBLE] tomorrow, but we have that, that variable is that extra week long window.
Well, again, the purpose of last week's meeting was specific, we voted, we moved some across, um, there's some variables, we set some, we're just gonna move for discussion. I understand that there were gonna be some people who were gonna add something, so I'm not gonna shut anybody down for bringing ideas. But again, they need to be specific ideas. I'll answer, Mr. Reminski sent the email out today asking why we need to put his option on. His option was specific, there were recommendations to the manager, nothing that's council. I think we might explain that, actually. So again, if we're gonna come to a meeting tomorrow, anyone, so that should be specific, count specifically with those items. But tomorrow, you know, [INAUDIBLE], it's gonna be a voting meeting and we're gonna vote. Last time was kind of a, was a discussion.
It's on the agenda for a vote tomorrow.
For a vote. And we could actually, I'm gonna ask you a question, we could vote on the amendments, but if we wanted to, we could still move the final vote to them, is that fair, Tom?
Anything before fifteen.
And we can offer to do amendments?
Oh, that's, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Just be very specific to what we could do, not, not to what we recommend the manager could do.
And it can, it can still be amended up until the fifteenth, anything.
Yeah, just because I, I just wanna make sure that we do our due diligence and make sure we have everything as exactly precise as possible and, you know, up to the [INAUDIBLE].
And again, the meeting for tomorrow, I know, I, I think, unless, it doesn't hurt to have another meeting before we're at right now.
I figured that last, if we do have on, on the fifteenth, like I said, like in the mail, it could just be a strict vote, yes or no, and that's it. And you can all [INAUDIBLE].
Yeah. That's okay, so. All right, thank you everyone. Mr. Chair.